I would like to call the regular scheduled County Fairfield County Council meeting to order Monday, March the 25th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Let it be noted that Mr. Robinson will not be present tonight. He has a illness in the family and he is out of town. So keep Mr. Robinson and his family in your prayers. Next, we are down to the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Item three, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six zero on the approval of agenda. Item four, invocation, Vice Chair, Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recognize some sick and some of the bereavement that's been occurring in the community in the late here of late. So we'd like to recognize pray for Mr. Lair, Mr. Robinson, who's out, and some of the other members that may be may have some illness now. So let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, we come before you right now, Lord God. We submit ourselves to you right now, Lord God. We ask that you just take control of our minds, our hearts, Lord God. We ask that you just be a part of this meeting. Give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, oh merciful Father. We ask that you bless each and every one under the sound of my voice. Father, we just need you. We need you more now than ever, Lord God. And Lord God, I'd like to take the opportunity to lift up to you those that are sick, those that are suffering, Lord God. I don't come to tell you anything, Lord God, but I just ask that you will have favor upon them right now. Father God, again, we just thank you for being God and God alone. We ask right now, Lord God, that you just look at our country, our state, our county, Lord God, and those of us, Lord God, that has to make decisions that affects our citizens, Lord God. We just ask again that you just give us the wisdom and the knowledge and the understanding and the love for one another, Lord God. Please take away the bickering, Lord God, the naysayers. Let us come together, Lord God, as one, then bow for long prayer, Lord God. But I just want to thank you for this moment to be able to pray to you. Thus I pray in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Next, we are down to approval of minutes for the regular meeting, March the 11th, 2024.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded for the approval of minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect five zero, I'm sorry, six zero on approval of minutes for March the 11th, 2024. Now we are down to item six, public presentations. Item A, Brandon Henderson from the Blair Incorporated.
Yes, I know I have a heavy voice, so I have to project a little bit differently than everyone else. Good evening, everyone. I'm here today on the behalf of people and as my distinguished council lady there calls no man's land from time to time over in western Fairfield County Blair. Born and raised with McCorley Liston, et cetera. And all my life, nothing has pretty much been over there. Lack of attention to that part of the county as well. And I've traveled the world a little bit with my job as a project manager and I see things that I feel like we can utilize in our area. So with that being said, I spoke to different members of the community and we decided that incorporation may be the best way to proceed with being recognized by the county, by the state in an adequate way. So I've initiated the process. I've started the feasibility study. I'm about 90% complete or so, but that's why I'm here this evening. I need the council to, a resolution from the council pretty much to say that all services that the county currently provides to the residents of Blair, that those services will continue post incorporation until we meet former council, meet and decide if we want to have enhanced services. So that's why I'm here tonight and also to put it on your radar that and I will be keeping everyone informed as far as where we are in the process, how much further we have to go, and I don't plan on stopping until we are incorporated and recognized by the state of South Carolina. So that's why I'm here today, just to put that on your radar. And nothing major at this time, but I can, if you'd like, highlight some benefits of incorporation of Blair that I've stumbled upon upon my research. And I think it will be a benefit not only to the residents of Blair, but to the overall county as far as economic development, cultural development, possibly population growth. If we do it right, we can get our population back up, which has been on decline for the past couple of years. So I'm excited for this venture and I look forward and we look forward as the residents of western Fairfield County in Blair, look forward to getting the county incorporated. So that's it. Any questions from the council as far as incorporation or where I am in the process? Yes, ma'am.
Because I know that's up because I'm in dark corner USA.
Yes, ma'am.
That's where this is. So what part of this are you talking about incorporating?
Yes, ma'am. Well, with with the process, it has to be contiguous as far as the census blocks and it also has to have a population density requirement. With that being said, the Buckhead area of Blair meets that right now. And if you're familiar with western Fairfield County, if you make leave another windmill, if you make a left at Salem, a right at Salem's Cross Road, excuse me, go about two miles is a fork in the road, right there will be the beginning of the incorporated area of Blair. However, that incorporated area will serve the entire western part of Fairfield County. It's members of the community within the incorporated area and outside of incorporated area that would directly benefit from the incorporation of Blair. So.
So it's not going up the Dave Jenkins Road? We're not going to be incorporated?
We it's a process. We can be, but it's a process. And with the population density, we just can't incorporate all of western Fairfield County. However, annexation is always on the table if the residents of that area would like for it to be. So we can make it as large as we would like if the residents of that area decide to be annexed. However, I feel like once it's done and once it's there and the residents see action, they'll be more inclined to be annexed into the actual incorporated area. Also, with that being said, even if you're not annexed in the incorporated area, it doesn't necessarily mean that you will be removed from said services of the town because the municipality can provide services to any area outside of its municipality. Of course, it would be for a fee or so. However, I'm looking to represent the entire side of the county to make sure that we have services that that I feel like are basic at this point in 2024. So if you're not incorporated into the initial city limits, it doesn't mean that you would not benefit any of the services that we could possibly provide over there in Blair.
So what's your next step? I mean, what's what is the next step?
Well, the next step is a resolution from the council asking stating that the services such as fire and that that's an important one will be provided as normal post incorporation. However, once we incorporate, if we decide to get a fire department built or enhance services, then we'll be back here to negotiate a new contract with the council for enhanced services. But to be incorporated, we need at minimum that the services are kept at the basic level as of right now.
Well, they're pretty basic out there now.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying.
Absolutely. And that is another reason why I decided to pursue this because one of my close friends I grew up with, her house burned down. Fire trucks had to come from Newberry and I wasn't in the state at the time, but I couldn't figure out why fire trucks had to come from Newberry. And her house burned down to the ground and like we grew up together and X, Y, and Z. And I was like, you know, we have to do something about that because if her house burns down to the ground, my mom's house will burn down to the ground as well. So we have to do something about that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Root? Yeah, just a couple of questions. I was just curious, how long have you been in this working on this process of incorporation? And have you had any backlash or is the large majority of the area of citizens in favor and supporting it?
Absolutely, absolutely. As far as speaking to members of the community, I haven't had anyone to say that this isn't something needed. That is really, you know, what it's got to be for it right now. I haven't had any pushback from the community. I have had some pushback in the process, but that's what I'm here for, the pushback to balance it out. Everything is about balance. And I've really been working on this for probably about 10 years now. On and off, collecting data, collecting information. However, pandemic hit. I was living in New York at the time. I moved back home and that is when when I really realized, okay, this is needed. I'm at an age now, I may want to retire back to this area, but I don't want to have to drive 30 minutes to get a loaf of bread. So let's do the work now, see what we need to get done and we'll make it. So percentage wise, I'm about 90% done as far as the work. I've already spoken with Sheriff Montgomery. I have a letter from them saying that the services will continue post incorporation. Also, I've spoken with voter registration. We have the the area mapped out and I have a list of all of the eligible people and X, Y, and Z. So I'm about 90% complete of of the process and hopefully by this time next month, I will be actually submitting the application to the Secretary of State.
Well, I'd just say I commend you for what you've done. You did a lot of work.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
I too thank you for the work that you've done. I was very proud of you. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, we are down to six B, Ms. Ann Broadwater with Fairfield County Economic Development Update.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here today. Part of the conversation came up when we were doing the work session for the council that it would be a good thing if the whole public could hear about some of the good things that we have going on and the steps that we've taken to continue to implement our strategic plan. One of the things that I mentioned was that we were working on an article with Business Facilities Magazine with the help of the I-77 Alliance and that it would be published. Well, here it is. As you can see, one of the first things that they talked about was the fact that Fairfield County had the first economic development announcement in the state of South Carolina with capital concrete. It further goes on to talk about some of the great things that we've got going on and how we are the future. So I just thought, you know, I'd share that with you. This magazine goes out to site selectors around the nation and our good friend, Mr. Gene Stevens, has already put it out on social media. It's available on our website and the county's website. So I hope y'all take some pride in that. All right. Next, we talked about the strategic plan. And what I told you then was that this strategic plan is a living, breathing document. It's not a do this and this will happen, but it's got several key components that we can move with action items, goals identified, and priorities listed. So I shared it with you. Here are some of the target industries that we're looking at. In our program of work, we're looking at quality sites and buildings, investment in infrastructure, retention and expansion of existing industries, developing a strong talent pipeline. And raising awareness of Fairfield County as a place to be, which we just got started on that, and having an innovative economic development office. Now, looking at the list of priorities, we talked about the mega site plan and implementation, infrastructure, product development, funding, and issuing an RFP for signage. Okay, the mega site plan, as I mentioned to you, not only are we completing the actual the infrastructure improvement with the road having been recently paved, the access road, but also the million square foot pad has also been completed. We actually have a closeout meeting next week with the developer who is on the site. I talked about product development funding and the focus that we were going to place on the Peach Road property. We have been able to close on that property. I had submitted an application for site enhancement funds to the tune of $500,000. Unfortunately, we learned that we didn't make that cut. It was very competitive, but I was pleased that I was pointing in a direction for additional funding from another source and also told that they would be willing to take another application on that. For the RFP signage design, Ms. Williams, would you like to say something about that? Okay, it's on the agenda. All right, the second priority was completing the housing study. We met virtually with MRB Group in December of this past year and they had provided us with their task of deliverables. That will be moving forward once we have a community development director on board. And so we're excited about that moving forward. Explore Exit 32 Plan. We have we put in for the Palmetto Sites Program for Exit 32, the Averit Track. We've already received the document that provides us with action items for moving it forward. I've developed delivered that to administration, but will need to meet with the Economic Development Committee who will then make the recommendations to the entire council. So you can look forward to that. In addition to the Averit Track, I put the mega site through the Palmetto Sites Program as well, reason being that it was divi it was designed for a single user automotive. And with the announcement of scout right down the street, we've been directed to look at other ways that we can use that site. We had the group come in. They haven't given us our final evaluation yet, but we can look forward to having that that we can present to the Economic Development Committee with recommendations as to how to move forward. On the wifi, we already heard about that and how we can look for broadband opportunities and, you know, put that out on social media to get people involved in that process. So now I'd like to show you the videos that were produced. They were not done for the mega site. They were done by the Department of Commerce and that we had identified some funding that had expired, that they were willing to let us move forward with. The first one will be parcel seven, which is in our industrial park. It's a pre-graded pad that's gotten a lot of attention. Okay, so that's parcel seven, which is directly across the street from the Economic Development Office and right behind BoMAG. Now we're going to look at Commerce Center. Okay, and finally, we have the Averit Track. All right. So again, the department So again, the Department of Commerce has very high standards on these video productions. As part of the application and implementation of the funds, it's required that we have the properties listed and marketed for industrial use and include the updated videos that are produced. So the Averit Track is already up, as is the updated information on Fairfield Commerce Center and Parcel 7. It just, it comes not just with the video, but details on the property, pricing, everything that you would need to know for a good investment. And we're excited about that. I've gotten a lot of activity. In addition to that, you may have noticed on the overview for Fairfield Commerce Center that the existing speculative building was under construction. Well, since this video was done, that building has been completed and it's ready to go. I've already gotten some interest in that as well, so I think we're in a good position here in Fairfield County to move things forward. Some of the things that were mentioned in the plan with goals attached to it, I can say, had to do with developing existing industry visitation and business retention and expansion. What we've decided to do was partner with the Fairfield Chamber of Commerce and not only have our existing industries involved in all of the great things that they could potentially be available for, but the businesses in the community. So Dylan and I will be doing some joint ventures. The next one that's coming up will be quarterly roundtables. We're excited. The save the dates have gone out to the industries and the businesses. And for our first roundtable, we're going to have insights from Scout Motors surrounding their plans for moving forward. Going to have a discussion on comprehensive education and workforce plan in the form of an online portal that's under development. Mr. Charles Appaby from the South Carolina Department of Employment and Workforce will be discussing that with attendees. And we'll also have some small business resources available from both the South Carolina Department of Commerce and the South Carolina Manufacturing Extension Partnership. We're going to be sending out a formal invitation, including a link to reserve your space. So those of you who are eligible, you'll be looking for that to come out in April. So I thought that was a great thing. Another thing we're doing is we're getting more formal on our existing industry visits. We have developed a form to gather information, and we're also partnering with the South Carolina Department of Commerce's existing industry program. I've already made a few visits, actually have next week, no, not next week. What's today? Wednesday. Going to be calling on three companies. So as you can see, we've been busy. They talked about doing marketing missions and trade shows and what have you. I discussed with you the process. At the beginning of the year, the Department of Commerce lists their activities that they're going to do statewide. They send them out to their regional partners, who share them with their local partners to sign up for those things that you feel that your area could benefit from. So I'm doing five trips with the I-77 Alliance and four with the Central South Carolina Alliance. I've already done the automotive show for I-77. I've got the Industrial Asset Management Council coming up next week, week after Lot of travel, lot of opportunity, using the assets that we have and the funds that they provide. They reimburse us for those expenditures. Some of them, they pay upfront. So we're getting the message out around the country, around the world. I actually have a trip to Korea planned in September. I know you're jelly, Cynthia. So any more questions or concerns about what we're doing or not doing?
Just keep up the good work.
Thank you. I'm proud to do it. I get up every day with Fairfield on my mind, and I want to keep it positive, and I appreciate you working with me to help make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Broadwater, for that economic development update. Next, we are down to first public comment session, but before we do, I will read a Rules of Public Comment. Fairfield County Government welcomes public input during appropriate times at county council meetings. Such input would be allowed in the time, place, and manner determined by the Chair of the County Council as the Presiding Officer. Persons wishing to speak must conduct themselves in the following manner. Sign up at the appropriate time to speak. Refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that seeks to disrupt or disturb the meeting. Respect the time limit for the public comment. And refrain from personal attacks or personal statements about any individuals. Such statements are disrupted because this part of our meeting is not for its changes between individuals. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Kathy Falk.
Good evening, council and administration. I'm Kathy Falk. I'm a resident of Fairfield County and president of Hoof and Paw. I really just wanted to thank council and administration tonight for getting the animal ordinances back on the agenda. Thank you all so much. If passed, these updated ordinances will absolutely improve animal welfare in Fairfield County and hopefully in other counties as well. I have attended all of the committee meetings regarding these proposed ordinances, and I feel strongly that over time, they will help control overbreeding, overpopulation, and overcrowding in our shelter. They're also going to help get pets back to their owners much quicker if they do happen to find themselves in the shelter. They'll be able, the employees there will be able to get animals back home much quicker with, if these ordinances are passed. I'm looking forward to the second reading and the support from council and the community. We have a public safety problem, and we have a severe animal welfare crisis that really must be addressed. Do we need a new shelter? Absolutely. Do we need an upgraded, improved shelter on what we have right now to get us to the point to where the animals are okay, you know, however long that takes, to where we have a new facility? Do we need an upgraded shelter that will get us up to at least a humane level of care? 100%. 100%. But we also have to look at how we are going to address the root of the problem. And these ordinances, if passed, in their entirety, in their entirety, will do that. They will help address the root of the problem. Thank you so much for your time.
Don Goldbach.
Good evening. Don Goldbach, District 2. I would also like to address the animal ordinance that Ms. Falk did. I have to admit, I'm not totally prepared to address this subject, and part of the reason is I very recently went to the shelter in an attempt to talk to Director Shaw or some of the staff, but when I got there, the door was open and I couldn't enter the office because there was like a child gate that kept me from getting in there. And I just happened to look at the lady at the reception desk. I never got her name because she was so busy. She was on the phone. There was a woman standing at the desk, and she looked at me and smiled. She says, "You might have to be patient. I've been here about 20, 30 minutes, and I'm waiting to get my dog." I looked over the chair. There's two cats cuddled up on the chair. I'm thinking, wow, they must keep animals in the office because out of space. I also looked at the current ordinance, and it seems like, my first impression of the shelter was, and I've been avoiding going there because I hear those poor dogs barking back there, and it just breaks my heart to think about where, you know, what they're living with. But I actually went, and it seems like they're overworked. The staff is overworked for the amount of care they have to provide and what they have to do. And I looked at the animal ordinance, the current one, and there's a lot of laws in there and a lot of things that if they were enforced, if they did happen, it seems like there wouldn't be the problem with animals being abandoned and so forth. So to me, part of it is enforcement, and I don't think it's fair to rely or reasonable to rely on the Sheriff's Department to enforce all the laws, including animal ordinance. But a question is, the animal control officers, are they trained and certified to be able to enforce the laws? As a sheriff would be, or a deputy would be. If not, maybe that's something we could look at, to share the load between the Sheriff's Department and animal control. So I look forward to actually speaking to someone at the shelter. I will try again in the near future, but again, my first tonight, I'd have to agree with Ms. Falk. It looks like the animals are in a pretty tough situation there and could use a little more humane treatment. So look forward to seeing the new ordinance, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Anne Correio.
Good evening. Anne Correio, District 2. I'd like to address Item 9, Animal Control and 17, Water and Sewer. In regards to animal control, I have had recent discussions with Joanne Shaw and Rose Marie Wright. It is my understanding that Ms. Shaw has met with the council committee handling animal control, and Ms. Wright recently emailed her concerns to all council members. It's worth mentioning that only two council members responded, and the responses were very short, saying that they will be speaking to the issue. As Director of the Fairfield Animal Control, Ms. Shaw has reviewed and researched the changes needed to help make the citizens of our county better educated on adoption, pet ownership, and enforcement of ordinances. She has proposed some very efficient and effective strategies that if implemented, could help curb ongoing constraints that tie their hands. With a limited staff of six and two staff members having stepped down recently, she has proposed to the council ideas that can make it effective to help these citizens. Some suggestions on behalf of your constituents that I've spoken to. With only one vet available within limited hours of operation, having a part-time vet on staff would be a tremendous help. The licensing of animals would help in returning the ones at large back to owners and help with proving ownership when abuse cases are investigated. Finding an alternative in caring for court case animals, seeing as this can become a long-term liability to the shelter. Animal control staff could attend the Criminal Justice Academy and become Class III officers. This would enable them to write tickets pertaining to animal control encouraging responsible pet ownership. Ms. Shaw has already made great strides in increasing the efficiency of the staff by training all staff in all areas. It has been the citizens' hope for a long time coming that suggestions such as the above and the ones for a new animal shelter be seriously considered and funded in the budget. On the issue of water and sewer, the treatment plant in Winsborough can handle 1.6 million gallons per day, currently handling 1.1. This only leaves 500,000 additional treatment gallons available. This means the sewage treatment plant is at 68.75% capacity. The concern is, at 80%, it is required that additional capacity needs to be made available, taking four to five years to develop. With growth in our future due to recent property purchases by investors, a revenue stream would be created with the one-time capacity fees to help alleviate the cost, and additional lines are necessary. In compiling this research, the information was definitely not easy to find. We are hoping the comprehensive plan can be updated to reflect more concise information in addressing the where, the why, and the how. I'd also like to commend the presentation today on the land available. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1, Fairfield County. I too would like to commend some of the items on the agenda. We have a kind of a mixed bag on the agenda today, but on the good side, certainly animal ordinance, a long-term problem that we're finally addressing, a long-term problem that we need to continue to address. So thank you for having that on the agenda and moving forward with that. Also, it's good to see that the museum is getting some attention. It's a vital, another vital aspect of our community, both as a draw, a service to humanity, and our economic development. Thank you for including those on today's agenda. On the other side of the coin, however, those items, there are many other items that are not on the agenda that have been long-term sorely needed items to be addressed, sorely needed topics to be addressed. One is, we've proven comp plan needs an execution, detailed execution plan. That should have been on the agenda, times wasting. Also, the budget. The last few years, we've had major misses on the budget, major misses that showed up in the audit and elsewhere for final financial reporting. That should have been on the agenda to correct the process on the budget, to ensure that we have an accurate budget that gets us where we want to go. And also, on the missing agenda is, we've never addressed the fact that Fairfield County ranks 29th in gross domestic product production of all counties in the state, and yet we're only maybe the sixth smallest county in the state. It's an amazing feat, and of course, the main reason why is Dominion. And what that leads us to is, is that we need to springboard and leverage and tout the fact that we're 29th in the state and we're probably 40th in size. That's a major accomplishment, and it should be a major springboard and should be on the agenda touted and talked about at length. How do we diversify so that we're even bigger? And you're talking a billion dollars. Also, on the agenda, continuing the resume, or excuse me, resolving the issues found in our financial accounting, both in the audit, and this has been a long-term problem for the last several years. These are all items that are here and now and have been challenges for us for the last few years, and they should be on the agenda. So some good, some misses. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to Item 8, Public Hearings, None. Number 9, Ordinance Resolutions and Orders. Item A, First Reading by Title Only. Ordinance Number 834. An ordinance to repeal Ordinance Number 737 and to adopt and establish the rules and regulations pertaining to animal control in Fairfield County and revise Chapter 4, Animals of the Code of Ordinances, Fairfield County, South Carolina. Code of Ordinances, Fairfield County, South Carolina.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. There is no discussion. It's by title only, first reading. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0, First Reading, Ordinance Number 834. Boarding Commission Minutes. This is for information only. Disabilities and Special Needs, November 17, 2023, December 15, 2023, and January the 19th, 2024. 11 Boarding Commission Appointments, None. 12 Old Business Gateway Signage, and it is a action item. Ms. Williams, Mr. Keegan?
I'll take a shot at it and she can fill in the blanks where I mess up. Back in December of last year, Council solicited proposals for the design work for the gateway signage, and we're talking about signage on I-77 and some wayfaring signage as well. The proposal that was received from Sky Design is the one that was recommended or is being recommended tonight. It's for $32,250. You did approve $50,000 from the Rural Stabilization Fund for this project, so the bid came in under budget. So we would recommend that you approve Sky Design's proposal for design so we can put them to work on this project.
Any questions from Council for Mr. Keegan?
Is it just one sign?
No, ma'am. It'll be probably on both north and southbound sides of I-77. The proposal is to be seen from both sides of the road. You've probably seen them going into Chester County or into York County and Jasper County's got a big one coming into the state, but that's kind of the idea we're thinking about.
So we're not going to put them anywhere else like?
No, there's, there's some wayfaring, wayfaring signage in their proposal. Not exactly sure where that's going to be. That'll be part of the, the information gathering meetings that we have with the company after they start work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council, this is a action item. Everyone that's in favor of the gateway signage? Oh, we need a motion.
Some who?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. No more discussion. It is a action item. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 on approval of the gateway signage. 13 New Business, we have none. 14 County Administrators Report. Mr. Keegan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Council, we've heard a great deal about the animal ordinance tonight. You did give it first reading and we have made some of the changes that the committees have recommended. There are some other clarifying language changes that we think need to be made. So our recommendation is to go back to committee, to the committee one more time, not to slow the thing down, but to go back to committee one more time. We'll schedule that meeting as soon as we can get everybody together to make those recommended changes so they can recommend to the full Council the changes to the ordinance.
The museum grant, item B.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there, we have received a grant from the state historic, I can't get my throat to work out, pollen's about to get me, from State Historic Preservation Grant is what we've gotten. The grant is an amount up to $127,370. It does require match up to as much as $31,000. There is, there are funds in your grant match fund now that can be used for that project. Ms. Lyles has gotten that grant and it's for window upgrades at the museum. So we would recommend using the money that you have on hand to match the grant up to that amount. The match, the most that the county would spend would be $31,842.50 on the project. But we would recommend you accept that grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant and the match for the grant. Any further discussion? See a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 on approval of the museum grant. Next, we are down to item C. And I want to, I want to...
Mr. Chairman, this is...
I know it's Snyder. I guess geospatial.
Geospatial agreement.
Agreement, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. This, this is a proposal to upgrade our system at the assessor's office, the treasurer's office, to make them talk better together and give more access to information from our, for our citizens. The funding is available in the budgets that we have. It will require a change to your budget going forward and we'll budget for that during your budget meetings that you're getting ready to have. But this is an improvement to our system. The money that we need for the rest of this year can be found in the budgets that we've got, either through your contingency fund or the budget, so there's no need to change your budget this year. But this would be an improvement to our public information and within the systems that are taught to each other for our land management records. So we would recommend that you move forward with this proposal from Snyder Geospatial. Well, the money that you'll need for the rest of this year is not very much.
It's part of the, right?
It's pro-rata. Now, going forward, you'll need, there is a one-time fee for next year of a little over $13,000. That includes the one-time fee and the annual maintenance, and then the annual maintenance going forward after that's about $6,800 a year.
Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Keegan?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any other discussion? See a none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 on the action item for item C. Next, we are down to clerk the Council's report. There is none. Item 16, County Council Time. Any council members? Mr. Vice Chair Gilbert?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This past Monday, I attended the bi-monthly MUSC board meeting, of which Dr. J.R. Green and I are members of. Dr. Green asked how was the Fairfield ER doing. They stated that the ER was a little under projection. To consider good, the ER needed to see at least 25 patients a day. It's presently seeing a little under 21 per day. I told them that the wait time and the time before the doctor sees you is extremely long, that a lot of people was bypassing the ER because of the service and wait time. They said that they were aware of the problem and they had taken steps to improve it, that they had made changes in the medical staff that may have caused a lot of the delays, I'm sorry, that they are aggressively working to improve the wait time and services. I had a conversation with the COO, Mr. Matt Medley afterward, and explained to him that the facilities are extremely nice, but because of the wait time and the conduct of one of the medical staffers' rude conduct in the past, some prefer not to go there. He assured me that this, that that staffer was no longer there and if any future complaints, he wanted to know about them. He also assured me that, that they would keep working on doing what it takes to make the ER a better place to receive medical treatment. He and I will be meeting with the medical staff in the very near future. If anyone has any complaints or concerns, please contact me. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Green?
I'd just like to congratulate the Board of Disabilities and Special Needs on last Friday night. They had a talent show for their consumers and while quite a tear-jerker, I must say it was an excellent event and we are very fortunate to have our Board of Disabilities and Special Needs so active in serving the people of Fairfield County.
I just want to thank Mr. Henderson for all of his hard work. He and I had spoken on the phone and we may be going to put Blair on the map. We have, I just want to tell you that we have, well, we didn't have one before, but we have an eating establishment now in Blair. I call it a new eating establishment, but like I said, we didn't have one before. It's Stony's Feed and Seed Restaurant and it's on 34 and I have shared her menu items on my Facebook page. She has different days, like Taco Tuesdays and Fish Fridays and that sort of thing, but you can always get hamburgers or hot dogs and that sort of thing. And she has a super, super good meal on Sunday. Mr. Clarence said it's soul food, but anyway, if you're out that way, stop in. It's, it's right on your way to Newberry and it's, it's in Fairfield County. So we're working on putting Dark Corner in, on the map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waringen. I would just like to say, last week, I think several of us and several of you attended the ribbon cutting for the new Chamber of Commerce building. And I just want to give credit to everyone that was involved in that process. The building looks great. Mr. Pullen, y'all have done a great job on the building. I like how you have different municipalities, Town of Ridgeway, Town of Winsboro, Jenkinsville. I think all of that is labeled inside of, of the Chamber of Commerce. So just a great job and, and I know that building is going to serve you well. I think it's definitely a, a step up from the previous building that you were in, but I look forward to great things from the Chamber of Commerce. Also want to put on notice that the county offices will be closed on Friday for Good Friday. That does include recycling centers as well. I think they will open back up on Saturday. Saturday and Sunday should be regular days, but all county offices will be closed on Friday. Next, we are down to Executive Session. In Executive Session, Item A, Receipt of Legal Advice and Discussion of Negotiations Incident to Propose Contractual Arrangements with the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System Pursuit to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, can, can I ask? I believe that at one time we, well, I know when I was on before, we voted to have Easter for the recycling centers closed on Easter Sunday. Has that been changed because that, that had been done?
Um...
It was done, I know, when I was on there before and it, and we changed it so that it was closed on Easter Sunday unless that's...
Well, that's a, I think that's a decision that Mr. Keegan and Ms. Williams could make as the administrator and wouldn't require a council decision.
Well, what I'm saying is we voted on that in council several years ago to change. So it would be closed every Easter Sunday going forward unless that had been voted on to change, I would think that would stand.
Mr. Morgan?
I think the problem at this point in time is because it wasn't on the agenda and we haven't moved to amend the agenda, that I don't think it would be appropriate for a council vote at this time. However, I believe the Chair is correct. If administration makes that determination that it wants to be closed on, on Easter Sunday, then I think that's an operational decision that could be taken up by the administration.
Well, I guess so if, if a motion was made and passed at a prior council, I mean, seven, eight years ago and it's been carried out and it would have to be passed...
It's going to have to be brought back up just by virtue, I'm sorry.
To change, to change that policy, right?
I would, number one, I'm not, I don't know whether it was passed seven or eight years ago and please, I'm not trying to default you or, and I understand, I remember we've, you know, it's been some time since we've, we've been up here before as well. I think it could be a situation wherein too, that that council, that would be a decision that would be binding on this current and future, this current council, and so therefore it probably needs to be brought back up each time that a council comes on. So every two years, that could be a policy decision that would be made at that time.
But Mr. Keegan will check on it to see. Thank you.
Okay, motion going Executive Session.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to go into Executive Session. No further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0. We are in Executive Session. Everyone have a nice Easter holiday. You want me to announce it again? Y'all want me to announce it again or? You want me to announce it again? Y'all want me to announce it again or?